To the February 6th Board of Selectmen's Meeting, the meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown online and on local access television. If you please join me in the Pledge of the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first we have, we need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 27th.
Show motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And accept for review the meeting minutes of January 9th.
Make motion to accept the minutes of January 9th for review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have two resignations, Julie Emerald Diedrickson from the Recycling Committee and Amy Murphy from the Agricultural Commission. Please welcome to accept those resignations and send a letter of thank you.
Show motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment period. Anyone have anything for public comment period?
No, the only thing is, I think we just announced the lights are blinking down there on 106, we're on our way. Wait, you say there's a, there's a period of time now before they?
Is it thirty? Thirty, sixty days, David?
Thirty, sixty days, David, how's that work?
Yeah, based on the fact that there's still some other parts that have to come in, probably gonna end up being ninety days, but yeah, there's mass DOT regulations that they have to blink for so long to educate drivers to come through the area. So you probably get, right now they're targeting April, that time period for it to be fully operational.
When did they start flashing?
Well, they were, just were installed yesterday. I'm not sure if they're actually flashing yet, but I know they were just installed yesterday.
They were doin' flashin'.
Good.
Anything else? Town Ministry's report, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first on the agenda is, under my report, is just an FYI to the Board. As you all are aware, there was some concern with Selectman Marrera voting on alcohol policy due to the fact that he's on the Board of Directors for San Jose Round and Gun Club. I felt strongly from the beginning because it's a blanket policy that there was no conflict of interest. However, Selectman Marrera asked me to contact legal counsel and make sure that we receive a formal opinion, which I did. Legal counsel concurred with our concern that there was no conflict, however, to belt and suspend her. He also forwarded his opinion, which is his right to do, over to the Ethics Division, and they have thirty days to respond. Their letter comes back and concurs with legal opinion, in my opinion, that Selectman Marrera was not filing any conflict of interest, since it's a blanket policy and our policy provided no unfair advantage to him personally or to the club that he represents.
I want to thank you for doing that, David. It's, you know, I, I thought that I was, you know, handling it properly there, and now I can put that to rest. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Second is just FYI again to the Board. This is where leveraging Surcage, which is about twenty other communities where we do procurement with it, really comes into, to help. As we all have discussed, the EPA has more stringent requirements now for stormwater removal and discharge. The regulations are pretty strict, and so are the potential fines for non-compliance. So what we have done is, is that we would probably never be able to get a grant from the state in order to be able to get properly trained on the new regulations. So we have partnered with our Surcage group. We have applied for a $50,000 grant from the state of Massachusetts. The engineer that we hired is, is on favorable terms with the decision-makers, so we're hoping that we'll receive it, and then that will provide ample amount of educational support to West Bridgewater and other towns that our Conservation Agent and our DPW Director can go to and make sure that we're compliant going forward. So hopefully we'll get the grant, but again, just an FYI to the Board that I wrote the letter and we're making every effort that we can to secure outside funding to make sure that we're properly trained. Next on the agenda is what we just discussed, which is the East Street, East Center Street. The Master Round was installed yesterday. Quite frankly, it was scheduled for February 8th on Friday, but due to the weather, it was such a nice day, they had it in stock, they contacted me yesterday morning and had said, is there any possibility that we could get over there? Police were allowed to be able to, were able to fill the dispatch request, the detail request, I'm sorry, and so they put it in yesterday. They were working on it again today. They are still waiting for an electronic board that has to come in that's gonna synchronize, so we don't know when that'll come in. What's really interesting is, remember, we got funding for this in June. For whatever reason, it takes six to nine months to get all of the equipment. I don't understand why it takes so long, but it just does. So they wanted us upfront. And we've also had all of the arms and masks black, so that way it will match the center of town as well. I went down there, I took a quick peek at it earlier today, it looked good, they were working on it. So, so hopefully that'll be one project over the next couple of months that will be complete, and that way we can then turn to the next one, which I'll discuss with the Board at that point, but I think that we should be looking at Matfield Street and Route 28 at that point to see what we can do. And just an update on the FY20 budget schedule, really this is just to inform you that this is a pretty light agenda, there's not a lot going on, but that's typical at this time of the year because budgets are all coming in. And next meeting is when your, your heavy lifting starts. So, so you will have four budget hearings, all of which you will listen to the budgets, there won't be votes at that point. You'll be listening to the budgets and inquiring and asking questions and going through the process, but next meeting it starts, so just, just an FYI on that.
David, will the budget books be ready before the next, before our next meeting?
Yes.
So that we could pick them up and start to?
Yep, they'll be ready before.
Start to review them?
Okay.
Thank you.
And last on the agenda is, is a State of the Town Address. In years past, I've done it from up here, but if there's no objection from the Board, I'm going to do it from here. To the Honorable Selectmen, it is with great honor that I come before you this evening to deliver my third State of the Town Address for the town of West Bridgewater. As I have said over the past couple of years, it's a fantastic town encompassing caring and experienced leaders, tremendous businesses, and proud residents. Anybody who lives, learns, works in place here knows this to be true. Tonight's message is an overview of the financial strength of the town, the many successes that we have accomplished over the past year, recognizing some failures as well, and acknowledging challenges that lie before us. I can enthusiastically state that the town of West Bridgewater is in great financial condition. The first barometer of the financial health of any organization is the examination of the town's assets. The town's overall value has dramatically increased over just the past few years. Two years ago in 2016, the town's valuation was just a little over $1.1 billion. It is now approaching $1.3 billion for a 15% increase over just two years. What this does is this indicates the fact that people want to build here, people want to invest here, and people want to reinvest into the town. I have consistently heard that our commercial tax rate is an impediment to businesses operating in or locating to the town of West Bridgewater, and the data would not agree with that. When businesses decide to locate, one of the things that they always decide on is where and what are they going to be having access to. And we're fortunate that we're on Route 24, which is a direct corridor that brings Boston to Fall River and connects the south coast to the city of Boston. It also happens to allow immediate access to 93, 95, and 195, so it's a natural magnet for business. Exhibit A illustrates that not only is West Bridgewater's commercial tax rate not an impediment, it's actually very attractive. So you can see every single town up on the screen that goes from Fall River all the way up to the end of 24, which happens to end in Randolph, and that is the commercial tax rate for every single municipality in that region. So you could see that not only is it competitive, it's actually on the low side. Quite frankly, the Board of Selectmen deserve a lot of credit for taking this leadership position and imposing fiscal discipline in the town. As a result, West Bridgewater has not raised at the traditional 2.5% for the past five years. In fact, the town is actually more than 1.9 million, it's almost $2 million below its levy capacity, which signals great financial flexibility and extreme prudence on this Board. Exhibit B provides verification that the town has not raised at the maximum allowable amount, and I've also provided you a graph so that way you could see how it compares to our neighbors, all of who are maximizing their allowable tax base. So here before you, you'll see from 2014, on the left-hand side, you'll see that you almost can't see any bars, and that includes West Bridgewater. That was the last fiscal year before I came in, and you raised it 2.5%, you maxed out your levy. After that, you could see in the red bar where the town of West Bridgewater has started to trend up, and you can also see that now we are approaching $2 million below our levy capacity. So all that means is, is that although we have the option to raise it 2.5%, this is verification that we are not, and you could see our neighbors are. In fact, you know, one of them only has $1,500 below their levy capacity on a $90 million budget, so there is no financial flexibility in that town whatsoever. By not maximizing the town's tax base, the Board has done a remarkable job in minimizing tax increases to residents. I fully understand that few people are happy with their tax bill, myself included. That is human nature. However, Exhibit C indicates how West Bridgewater's average tax bill is highly consistent with other local towns, even though West Bridgewater has a distinct disadvantage due to its small population. So again, you could see what we, how we rival in comparison to our other towns. Avon is not a local town or really a comparable town, but I know that a lot of times they're cited, so I included it here as well. And just so you're aware, graphs sometimes can actually even be a little bit deceiving. There's less than $100 difference between Avon, Bridgewater, and West Bridgewater, but we are grouped right there between those three. We're a couple of hundred dollars behind East Bridgewater, and we're about $1,300 below Eastern. Obviously, we're above Brockton, but Brockton does have 100,000 people in it. When you hired me almost now, six years ago, the town only had $11,000 in stabilization, which is basically the town's rainy day event or savings account. Today, the town has over $2.8 million. For the first time in my tenure this past year, we did not add money to the stabilization account, but that wasn't by accident. The reality is, is that the Department of Revenue's guidelines is that you want to be somewhere around 10% of your budget, that should give you enough flexibility without overfunding that account. We have just approached 30 to 31 million dollars, so this year here, part of the budget process, I'll be looking to try to add money to that account so we can stay within that 10%. Please also recall that for the fifth budget in a row, we have transferred $350,000 from free cash to pay down the construction debt on the new middle school, high school. In essence, surplus revenue of almost $1.8 million has been returned back to the taxpayer. What that means is, is that we could have taken that money and bought things, we could have spent it, we didn't spend it. We spent it by reducing the debt by almost $1.8 million and reducing the tax burden. And again, kudos to Jack Hughes at town meeting this past summer, because he pointed it out because he fully understands the great benefit that this provides to all taxpayers in town. While it is noble that we achieve the savings, we did not do it at the expense of the town's infrastructure or its people, nor did we minimize the services that our residents have to come to depend on. The town continued this past year to reinvest into itself through a new roof at the library, new vehicles for the police and DPW departments, and purchasing the latest technology and protective gear to make sure that our firefighters remain safe. In addition, we dedicate funding to begin the process of constructing and reconstructing sidewalks in town. Furthermore, in response to an unfortunate national trend of violence in our school systems, the town funded a full-time school resource officer. Although this is an additional expense, I can emphatically state that this expense is fire-dwarfed by the future positive results. Not only will our schools be safer, but the positive interaction between our police department and our schoolchildren will provide decades of mutual trust and respect. As I stated last year, while investments in infrastructure are important, the town is not represented by new trucks, concrete, or walkways. It is represented by its people. The town provided reasonable raises to all union and non-union personnel. The town was successful in negotiating sick-time buyback out of the fire union contract, which now means that our largest two unions in town do not receive sick-time full buyback as a benefit to all future employees. Reductions had to be made because these benefits were just simply not sustainable over the long haul, and our union should be fully commended for working with us all on this issue. One of my proudest accomplishments is that affected over the last five and a half, five and a half years, the Board has not had to entertain a single employee grievance. A grievance is when somebody feels that we have violated a contract, or we stepped out of line in reference to, say, human resource issues. At one time prior to me, employee grievance were pretty common. I hope that means that we're doing something right and that we're using the following mantra to be fair and reasonable at all times and allow the facts to guide us. I firmly believe that if we continue to, to do this, that we will have positive relations with all of our employees. Speaking of employees, I would like to take a moment and highlight some very important specific events that have occurred over this past year because of our great employees and their fantastic leadership. Our schools, led by Superintendent Dr. Oakley, continue to shine. The graduation rate is consistently around 98%, and our acceptance rate at colleges is over 90%. The school had only 50 spots available for school choice, but we received over 150 applications for those few slots. Obviously, people want to come to this town. I firmly believe that we have one of the best police chiefs in Massachusetts. He led the way to secure a state grant this past year, which allowed new technology in our schools. This grant purchased equipment where all visitors now coming to each and every one of our schools, their license will be scanned, they will be ID'd, and therefore the police in real time know who are in our schools. In addition, the grant also allowed us to be able to buy surveillance equipment, so that way we are able to monitor the schools in real time as well. Again, this all augments the safety that we now have for our school resource officer. Chief Flaherty deserves a ton of credit for reaching out and accomplishing this. The Board should be so proud of Library Director Ellen Snoyenbiss or staff and the work they continue to do at the library. Because of the groundwork they have laid, the library will now begin to be open on Saturdays during, during summer hours, which they have never done before, and they will also start to open a new service in town allowing passports to be processed. The amazing job of Annie Iannatelli, town clerk, should be duly noted. Early voting continues to be, to gain steam, which truthfully is a fantastic service to the voters. However, in reality, what that really means is, she actually operates a town election every single day for two weeks. It's a lot of stress on her, it's a lot of stress on our staff, and they can't get one vote wrong. You will also recall that her passionate discussion with you, this Board, communicating her ability to assist those handicapped with ADA-capable machines. Her sincere desire to make sure that anyone who wants to vote will have the opportunity to do so. She fully understands that democracy and our citizens' ability to shape its own government is what makes this country great. She continues to do a remarkable job. Fire Chief Ken Mayne, his first full year has made great strides to update and professionalize the fire department, and deserves a huge amount of credit for chasing down $15,000 that was owed to the town from the state in reference to the Center of Town project. DPW Director Chris Iannatelli has spent countless hours applying for every conceivable dollar that he can so we can add sidewalks to this town, and currently, we are on the brink of potentially receiving up to $1 million to help us fund these projects. Conservation Agent John Delano continues his quest to strike the right balance in protecting wetlands while also protecting property rights of owners. Council Agent Director Marilyn Mathers' infectious smile and positive energy just permeates that COA building, and she continues to provide a first-rate lunch to our seniors at little to no cost. Additionally, she implemented intergenerational luncheons that involve seniors with school-aged children. If you want to see a whole bunch of smiles, go to the luncheon. It's a great event, they are really fantastic events. Although I have not mentioned everyone, that doesn't mean that they are left out. Our department heads continue to provide first-class services to our residents. It is not only our employees that have overreached. Many of our residents, especially Board and Committee members, do a tremendous job and never receive the praise they deserve. John Cruz, Paula Bunker, Jim Holden, Jim Henderson, Art Cabral, and many others donate countless hours of their time lending a helping hand to the town. Assistant Steve McCarthy literally saved the town tens of thousands of dollars using his expertise in tax abatement cases. A very special thank you to Marion Leonard, who stepped in as moderator at our annual town meeting under very difficult circumstances. The town saved thousands of dollars when Mark McLeod selfishly dedicated his time and equipment in removing a building on River Street on behalf of the town. They all have one common trait, they focused on what is best for the town, and truthfully, there are many more that I could add to this list as well. 2018 was the first full year of the town owning a golf course. I am pleased to announce that the course was profitable, all payments to the town were made on time, and the town currently has over $400,000 in the bank for any unforeseen issues. Of course, the town is still in possession of a $350,000 bond above and beyond. Although we should always anticipate potential issues, the first year went perfectly according to plan. Only nineteen more to go. The Board welcomed a new face with Denise Reyes winning her election. Longtime Selectman Jerry Lawrence will be missed, but the town should take great solace in the fact that all three current members of the Board at one time sat on the Finance Committee. This gives you all a better understanding than most in the intricacies of town government and its respective budget process, and I can tell you, working in two other towns, I've never seen that. The Highway and Forestry Departments, now known as the Public Works Department, has been solidified after having been merged the prior year. For anyone who may have had doubts, the roads are still plowed, paving still continues, parks are well-maintained. Two years ago, we began the process of updating the town hall. You may recall how dated the paint and the decor was. The top floor was first to be updated. We continue the, the process, we continued the success by completing the first floor over this past summer. I am sure you agree that the makeover is positive for employees and our residents, and I know your office continues to receive that feedback. And as a side, it'll be very nice this summer when we can actually use our AC and hear each other. I have articulated a lot that has been accomplished. That is what you see. This is what you don't see. The town still has a shortage of police officers, the town does not have a planner or GIS person. These positions, along with an adequately-staffed police department, are essential for modern-day government. We all agree that we want to save money, but the reality is, we have been saving hundreds of thousands of dollars every year by asking all of our employees to consistently do more, and I am sincere when I say, we are at the point that there is very little more that we can ask them to do. I understand that some will focus on the cost of the increase, but I would argue that we should be thankful the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have saved each and every year up until this point. Stormwater regulations issued by the EPA are going to necessitate that we eventually hire a professional that can implement and oversee these new regulations. We're very fortunate to have a very skilled conservation agent in John Delano, but between the time that he splits between this, wetlands, and overseeing development, he's already stretched thin. This past year was the first time in my tenure that we did not see a single department head retire. However, the town did lose a very talented and professional person when Tracy Aldrich left to go back to the private sector. I can honestly say, she is one of the very best that I've ever worked with, and her skillset will be very much missed. Fortunately, we have been able to hire Linda Torres, who has more than a decade of experience, and she comes on staff and will also be, take on the responsibility of HR Director. This dual role will be a challenge, but I believe that we can make it work. Additionally, to my right, we also hired Lorna, and I can tell you that Lorna has been a great addition to the staff as well. Sadly, the town suffered a tragic loss in the untimely death of the town moderator, Jim Benson. I've worked in three towns, been, been present at countless town meetings in other towns, and I can categorically state that Jim was as good as they come. He has been greatly missed as a friend, as our moderator, and as our local historian, and replacing him will be a Herculean task. Over this past year, I made every attempt to implement the wishes of the Board. The Board provided me three goals to achieve this year. Selectman Marrera's goal was to move all the World War monuments into one place at the park and make sure that they were refurbished. That was accomplished. Selectman Lawrence provided a goal to make sure that I could provide a presentation to implement an HR director in the town. I've accomplished that as well. Chairman Kinnahan tasked me with providing a presentation along with an implementation plan to utilize electronic purchasing order system in the town. I regret to say that I was unable to achieve that goal. My goal was to present to the Board a plan to potentially save the town thousands of dollars by instituting and implementing a healthcare option plan. That, that presentation was done, and that goal was accomplished. The Board has consistently reminded me that a primary goal of yours is to reduce debt while not raising it 2.5%. This was accomplished as well. As mentioned earlier, you want a budget that continue to transfer money from free cash against the middle school, high school debt, and as I said, that was done. However, I do caution the Board that as more regulations take hold and our public continues to demand more of our services, to hold the line below the 2.5% threshold, we become increasingly difficult. This has been a successful year working on behalf of you. I feel like I have accomplished quite a bit. However, no conversation would be honest without also going over my shortcomings. I am bothered by the fact that I failed in carrying out the goal of Chairman Kinnahan pertaining to the electronic purchasing orders. I am continuously saddened by the continued negativity that continues at town meeting. Our town meeting is our professional business meeting, and I need to find a way to create more trust with the community so that those meetings can be more positive rather than negative. Disappointingly, a dog park has not materialized. We have continued to run into obstacles, and I've been unable to leap over them. The town funded this project, and as a result, I need to find solutions to these problems. I will admit that I'm not as always effective as I would like to be. I would like to be more actively engaged in meeting town residents, partaking in local events, and being present in committee meetings that happen throughout the town, and I'd like to be able to work more with department heads and be a resource as they need, as they need be. I vow to continue to move in this direction, and in the meantime, I thank each of you for always being supportive, understanding, and compassionate. A heartfelt thank you to all three of you. I will tell you this, West Bridgewater is a town of winners. While this New England region basks in the shadow of yet another Super Bowl win, West Bridgewater is home to local champions as well. Just this past year, all in one year, the high school football team won and was crowned its Division VIII Self-Sectional Champions. The field hockey team won the EAC Championships. The cross-country team won the Mayflower Championships, and our soccer team won its championship for the Mayflower as well. Please note that West Bridgewater is almost always competing against larger schools with a greater pool of players. Not only are our student athletes winning on the field, they are the future of the town as well. Anyone who doubts the greatness of this town is ignorant of the facts. As the Board of Selectmen, this is the town you oversee. A town that you could be so proud of, is that it is your leadership that provides the backdrop for all of these accomplishments to happen. Leadership provides the necessary resources to provide proper support without waste. Department heads, staff, coaches, teachers, and volunteers, all who are make this town great. Your leadership allows employees to flourish, striking a balance that allows employees to do their job without micromanagement. For all of these reasons, I firmly believe that the future is bright for the town of West Bridgewater. Families want to move here, developers want to build here, seniors want to use our COA, students from neighboring areas want to come here through the School Choice Program. I say this every year, I will say it again, this isn't by accident. All of these positive things don't just happen, they happen because of really good leadership. As a result, all I can say is that West Bridgewater is a great place to continue to live, learn, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you for all that you do. I think it's clear that we're heading in a great direction. We've been heading in a great direction for a number of years, and I'm sure we will continue with that path. Okay, did anyone else have any?
I just want to say, David, I know you put a lot of effort into this and, and also the taxpayers that, that, that takes a lot, and all the workers that we have at all. It's, it's like a team. It's a full team out here that, that values things. We, we get the participation of, of the taxpayers and the workers and everybody else. We couldn't do that. We certainly couldn't do this alone. It's, it's a team out here, and we just want to keep, uh, moving the team, and, uh, if there's anything that, you know, people have, that, the whole three of us, just call aside there. I mean, uh, ideas are open and, and listen. I mean, there's still a lot of things that we, uh, are here that, that we'd like to do, you know? And I know, uh, they have wishes too, and let's hear them, you know?
So I'd like to say thank you too, David. It's my first year, and you've been a wealth of information, always willing to help find the answer, investigate, and I appreciate that. And I, I could go on and on, but I pretty much can say ditto, ditto to what they said. Thank you.
Thank you. So with nothing further to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for purposes of conducting contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town administrator. And we need a roll call vote. Reyes?
Yes.
Marrera?
Yes.
Kinnahan, yes. Thank you.